In your front lawn.
Well, you should see how many annually we have against those two insurgents where they only go off. Or they go up, they forget a tree and miss the phone call by trying to bump through them.
Yeah, I figured, I figured four years back it'd probably be my guess. Try to figure along.
I had a guy on an F one fifty pickup. I don't know, three million dollars.
Thank you for coming to the noodle dinner.
Yeah, for sure.
Fine, I got passion.
Fine.
Yeah, you got the big one.
Who makes the noodles?
That's the big boy.
Yeah, no.
We used to make them by hand.
Yeah.
Now we cheat and buy them up in our.
I'll go over there.
Okay.
Find out what's there.
Then somebody else will be there.
Yeah.
I didn't look at them. It's what Mike told me.
Okay, that's as good as our homemade ones were, but they're pretty close.
I was gonna say, I feel like I remember that being a little bit different when I first started trying. Many years ago now.
We just don't have enough people to choose our.
It's a lot of work. Oh, wow, it's running back. I was like, I thought it was longer than the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's the mixed juice.
I did find a couple of things with the minutes, but for the life of me, I couldn't figure out how to get the track changes to work.
Like, forget it. Some things just aren't worth it.
It's just not good to be that I.
So we just have two, some of the documents.
To change it.
Yeah, I mean, you're.
We just have the two documents?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, it's seven thirty, so we'll, uh, open the regular meeting of the zoning commission. Um, Mike, would you call the roll, please?
Mike Capler.
Here.
Johnny Manz.
Yeah.
Bruce Hamer.
Here.
Andy Lewis.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
All right, since all five members are here tonight, our alternate, uh, Bruce Hamel, uh, will remain an alternate. Um, and I think I've got all the, no, I've got three mics on. How about that one down on the end? Is it on or off?
It looks like it's on.
Is the button up or down?
Up.
Okay, then it's on. Um, uh, I guess I should thank, um, Kendra and Steve Eisenbrown. Steve's here tonight. They came in and they spent some time working on, uh, the system and got some new cords, short ones, so that they indicate that all of the mics are working and the two long cords, we can move out to the table, uh, so that we could have people from the audience in, like, there's one sitting there by Mike. That one there could go down to Bruce if, uh, if he needs to speak, you'd be able to use that one right there. Uh, but for now, we only have, is it about, oh yeah, there's a couple of people on there. Um, people that are on Zoom, uh, can you hear us well?
I can.
All right, thanks, Bob. Good. Um, yeah, with that, we've called the roll, um, getting on down the, uh, onto the agenda here. Let me introduce, uh, any members that are present. We have, uh, Jim Steel Smith, Bruce McLaren, and Steve Eisenbrown, who are here. Uh, they're members of the, uh, Township Strategic Planning Committee. And Mike Cannon is our Director of Zoning. He's sitting up front here. Um, it's the only other person, uh, public that's here. I think that's Mr. Hershey.
Hershey, yes.
Uh, did I remember correctly? Okay. Yeah, so he's here tonight. I, I think he may be here to, um, present an application to us. For, uh, purposes of our meeting tonight, those of you who are on Zoom, uh, please keep your mics muted until such time as we're in a public, uh, session, or if there's a problem, you can open it and tell us that there's a problem with the, uh, something happening that we're not aware of because the screens are behind us. Um, but hopefully, uh, that won't be necessary and everything will work fine. Well, Mike, you, if you see something up there, like a new person needs to join, let us know so we can admit them to the, to the Zoom.
Sure.
We did hear a tone. Virginia's the one that's going over there to admit. Um, we don't have a way to do it up here without someone going back to the podium.
And Jenny, if you would please add your last name so that we know who you are. Jenny, could you please add your last name?
You'll stay, if you're on Zoom and your name is not uh, displayed, please state your name and also give us your address. It'll be recorded then that you were in attendance at the meeting for members of the public.
Bob Singer.
And we know who you are.
Okay, um, at this time then, we'll, uh, receive any new applications and, uh, Mr. Hershey, I understand that you brought one in, um, present to us.
My name's Dan Hershey. I live at one, five, six, seven, five Montgomery Road. I wish to change my adjacent property from AR one to FR one so that my two pieces of property align.
All right, thank you. Um, would you just give the copies that you brought in to, uh, Mr. Cannon and then he'll, uh, keep the original and then distribute copies, uh, to each of the zoning commission members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Mike, I will now ask you about the fees. Uh, did Mr. Hershey present you with two checks?
Yes, he did.
Okay, one should be for the base fee. Uh, is it for the correct amount?
Twelve hundred dollars, yes.
And then the other fee is based upon the acreage. Uh, you'll have to put a quick calculation and verify it's for the correct amount.
Yep. Everything's good.
All right, looks good. Um, well, at this point then, um, what we will look forward to doing would be to set a hearing date for this application. The usual procedure is we would set it for, uh, the first meeting the next month, a regular meeting, and it would be May the first. May's gonna have five Mondays, but May, and literally, May the first is
what's the first Monday of the month?
We know what the number of this hearing is.
Uh, this is our first one.
Twenty-three oh one.
So this, um, and I forgot to announce the time when we started the meeting, but for our, uh, secretary who takes the minutes from the he, from, uh, the recording, we started the meeting at seven thirty. Application HGZ twenty-three oh one. The only other application we've dealt with has been the PRCD that had, it said different applications. And we're receiving it today, so we can put today's date on there. Uh, Mr. Hershey, by chance, I just want to ask you, did you, uh, do this using the online, uh, or the application that was available online, or did you type it up?
Uh, actually, the application online does not have what's called an HTML, uh, link, so you can't actually.
Uh, that's, that's true. That was the case, but it is now active. So I, I didn't know how long it's been active, so.
Well, what I, what I did, uh, on the original is I took the two thousand twenty-two application and, uh, patch and paste.
Okay.
And, uh, copy. That's what you have.
That's fine. I'm sorry, it wasn't active for you sooner.
That's no problem.
All right. Um, let's see, if we set it for May first, will that work for our timelines? It will.
Yeah.
Cause that's, uh, gonna be four, one, two, three, four. Actually, it's five. One, two, three, no, it's four. So we were fault, we're within the twenty to forty days.
Yeah.
Um, and if we set the hearing for seven, seven forty-five?
Seven forty-seven, yeah.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. Okay.
That's good.
Uh, Mr. Hershey, what will happen then is we will publicize that uh, so that we can move forward with, uh, getting the notices out, uh, for the hearing. And it is scheduled for, uh, May the first at seven forty-five PM.
Very good.
That's all we need from you tonight.
Okay. I also want to go on record to thank Mike Cannon for his assistance and and, uh, helping me out through the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, going on down our agenda here, um, we have workshop minutes. Yeah. This is not. Oh, yeah, here they are. We had, um, reviewed these and submitted any changes. If you'll look them over, are there any additional changes, uh, that need to be brought up, uh, so that we would make our zoning assistant aware of those? Otherwise, uh, at, when we're ready, someone, um, is comfortable to make a motion to approve these minutes as corrected.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, workshop meeting minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three as corrected.
All right, thank you, Johnny. And a second?
Second.
Okay, Virginia seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing done, then, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right. All opposed, say no. Hey, excuse me, motion to approve the minutes as corrected, um, is approved. And we'll move on to the next item. Reports. Uh, Mike, you have a report for us tonight?
I do. Yeah, I just want to go over some things, uh, right now for the year, and keep in mind that we're comparing this to the end of April, uh, from last year, and we're actually first of April right now, first part. Um, right now, we have, um, three less single-family residential permits we've issued. We've got eleven less accessory buildings. Uh, one, one more pool and one more deck, uh, nineteen as opposed to, um, the count of thirty-two for the end of the month in twenty twenty-two. So we're behind last year. As far as enforcement issues, uh, just gonna touch base on, uh, we've got an issue on Harlem Road where we had junk car and debris's that, or debris that was set out. We have, uh, I sent a letter on two sixteen on them and they had fourteen days to take action. They did not. Uh, I sent another letter on three seven on that one. There was still no improvement in, uh, fourteen days after that. I have one on, and the next three, I'm gonna just summarize what I'm dealing with those when I'm done telling you about the next two. I mean, fifty-eight twenty-eight, State Route six oh five. Initial letter sent two sixteen, the follow-up letter sent three seven. Neither one of them have anything going on. Uh, on the Lewis Road, we've got the same situation going on, pretty much same time on the letters, two sixteen. Uh, three seven, sent second letter. On all three of those, I talked with Corey about that today. And I sent him all the relevant information, everything, all the actions I've taken. He's gonna follow up with a letter from his office. And then he's gonna keep me informed on what he's gonna do next and the further action to be taken and when he's taking it. So I can stay updated on that. On the Covean Drive property, actually, got a little bit of something going on there with, uh, Mr. Jordan. I met with him week ago Friday and met him out at the property and, and we reviewed exactly what we're looking for and, uh, some of the things that we think are an issue, and he was in agreement. He actually had a new dumpster there at the time and he was working on it, and he had, they definitely made some, they'd made some gains. So, uh, he's guaranteed me that they're gonna make the gains and continue to improve. So we're gonna give them a little bit of time. We'll work with them, but right now they're making some, uh, some gains on that property.
Happy to hear that.
Yeah, I was happy to hear it too. I was happy to see it. It's actually pretty agreeable. Uh, thirty-four, Green Cook Road, I sent, uh, the first letter on that, two twenty-three, and then a follow-up on three seventeen. And, uh, that property actually, after talking with Corey, uh, they're actually in compliance now. He had one junk car that I had an issue with and that was gone when I went there today. So he's, uh, he's probably gonna come off my list.
Well, you'll be happy about that and so are we.
Well, there's one, but I've got somebody, you know, somebody's finding more things for, for me to, to do. The other things are that, there's four other issues here that, that are gone straight to the BZA. Uh, there was only one that I thought would be coming to you guys, and that was Ray over here. I think I've talked with you. That was, that's the issue with, uh, the property, that he's gonna have two separate zonings on it and he has to transfer it to the other one.
Oh, right.
He actually isn't, didn't, obviously did not come in today, but he's not, probably not gonna make it until, uh, May. He's gonna wait for the owner, the guy that actually bought it off him to come up. They're gonna, I think they're gonna get a game plan together because it, it's, it's costing him a lot more money than he really made on the property and, and he thought it would cost him. So they're gonna get together and hopefully they can come up with, uh, a, uh, solution to the issue. Uh, really, the follow-up addresses are, are pretty much the same as it was last time. I, I do check in on the garage every time I go by it. Uh, I do have an issue, uh, with the sports barn down there that I'm dealing with him on right now. And, uh, hopefully we'll get that fixed. And then just the general comments, it's, it's still staying fairly busy. I mean, we've got, you know, we've got permits, people call them out permits every day. We've got, uh, issues on, uh, land where they call up and they wanna know what they're building. So we do have things that are happening and I see it getting busier and busier as the summer comes up, so we shall see.
Thank you, Mike, and, um, I want you to know that I'm, I'm, I don't wanna speak for everyone else, but, uh, the follow-up that you have been doing with these issues, there were people, um, were potentially out of compliance. Um, there's more that's, there's a lot more happening and it's unfortunately, some of that just built up over time. It was sitting there waiting for someone like you to come along that has more time since you've been hired full-time, uh, to be able to handle that and do the follow-up and then follow-up with the prosecutor's office. Uh, you know, we keep falling through the crack up there. And I think part of the problem with that had been that there wasn't someone that was full-time here to keep them on the ball in Delaware County at the prosecutor's office because they won't do anything unless we prod them along.
I, I agree with you. We, I mean, we had, we've gotta keep, keep them moving, and I think, just like you said, it's the issue where, you know, you had a part-time person. And when he had time or she or whoever was had time to work on it, they worked on it, and that didn't always coincide with the, it seems like it was very short terms at the prosecutor's office. They kind of run them through there. So if you miss the time, but Corey's just came in, I just came in, you know, we're, we're getting on the same page, and as long as it does seem like it takes a long time, and it may, it may take a little more time now that it gets out of my hands because for me, it's easy to stay on my, uh, fourteen days, fourteen days. I get on that one. It gets to Corey, I don't know what he's got to do, so hopefully he'll, he'll, uh.
At what point, let me ask you this, at what point does that, I think unless the fine is changed, um, the hundred dollar per day per, uh, occurrence fine, what, at what point does that kick in? My understanding was it would go back to when you first issued, or not necessarily you.
Yeah.
But whoever the zoning inspector was, when they first issued the notice of violation. So for some of those people, if it's been two, three years, they've run up a pretty big fine.
Yeah, unless unless Corey's gonna say we started over when he came in, and that's when it's gonna start. Just depends, cause he's, a lot of what he's saying, he doesn't have any documentation on it. Now, how, how thoroughly they look or how much documentation they keep, I don't know, but, uh, we did have one other issue that I didn't put on my sheet that I wanted to talk about, and that was the, we had that dump truck issue. We all aware of that? Okay. Nothing's being done with that. He didn't show up to the BZA. I talked with Corey about, well, the week before last, when I was here, and, uh, I typed up, uh, basically, I'm gonna call it a cease and desist, but it's not there yet. I, I told him, you know, you're using property for what it's not zoned for. We are aware of it. We want it to stop. You have fourteen days to contact me and tell me what your plan to evade the situation is. And if you don't contact me within the fourteen days, prosecutor's gonna take it over from there. So we did have that one other issue that I, glad you talked to me about it. So I remember to let you know that. We do have that going on, and I, and I did notify the, the person that made the concern, let them know where we stood on it, and they appreciated that. So gonna do the same thing with the, uh, the Witter property.
Yeah, I don't know what's happened with that one.
It's the one I said was in good shape. I stopped by there today and he has six cars that are parked there. They aren't junk cars. The one I had an issue with, he got rid of. So it's neat, clean, six cars there, and none of them are listed as junk based on the guidelines. And I went over with Corey again, just to make sure that we, as, as township, are tight on the, on the law, so.
Yeah.
Um, so he's probably gonna be coming off.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, it's a couple of things that I wanted to share with you. Uh, one I already mentioned is that all of the applications, uh, are now online and they can be completed on. Um, that was, thanks to Mike and, uh, Amanda, uh, they were able to get that, uh, accomplished and brought up to snuff. Uh, was it because we had to buy that software? Finally, the trustees part with a little bit of money to put that soft, make that software available, so we can do this now?
Yep. So, and, and Amanda's getting very good on that.
I checked to see if they were active, and I didn't fill one out, but yeah, it comes up, you can fill it in online. Uh, the other thing I wanted to also, uh, uh, compliment, uh, Mike and Amanda on is the, the minutes. All of the minutes that we have approved through March the sixth um, are online. So I would suspect that, uh, these minutes will end up, uh, online within just a couple of days. So if you wanna go back and look at any of our minutes, um, they are there uh, and available to review that way.
Are the, uh, you know, that if the trustees' minutes are also online?
Uh, they are online, but, and I looked at those today. Uh, I was surprised, and I didn't get around to sending the question to, to Kendra, um, up through January. The February minutes, I thought, was gonna ask her how soon they would be up because normally she does them after the trustees approve them. So that one's a little bit behind. Uh, the, the March minutes won't be up there until after they meet in April to, because they, they don't get posted until they're approved. But the, the February minutes, uh, have been approved, so I'm not sure where that stands with her. But like I said, for the trustees, they are there through January. Uh, you have anything to report, Johnny?
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, Tom, you have anything to report? I know we're gonna be talking about, uh, we've got items on the agenda. Do you have anything else that you wanna share with the group tonight?
Um, couple of things. Um, I looked for the Quick Strategy Guide on the Township's website, and I finally found it by searching for it through Google. Um, and it's a link to a Dropbox, uh, location, not to, not to the township itself. Um.
Yes, I've looked as well, and it's next to impossible to locate.
How can we make that easier to find?
Uh, Amanda and Kendra can move them around however they want. I know I just, I was having the same issues with some of the stuff I was looking for, and they moved them out of where they were into where I wanted them. So if you guys have an idea where you want them placed, where you want them placed under, they'll move it over there.
Well, the Quick Strategy Guide has been approved, um, to, as a part of the master plan. So when the doc, the, the master plan, table of contents, I guess, has to be uh, adjusted slightly so that it would reflect that new appendix that's going to be, that is there, because it, it's been approved. So that will be the way I think that, then everything would be in one place. You'd go to the master plan and you'll find, uh, uh, Quick Strategy Guide as an appendix within the master plan. So right now it's not there, excuse me, Tom.
No, I'm sorry. So does that show up under, under zoning committee? I mean, you, you could find it through.
And then master plan.
Yeah, there's a, there's a link, uh, under the zoning tab for the master plan. I, I, I looked briefly today too, expecting to see the Quick Strategy Guide there, but it wasn't there, and I didn't spend the time you did to find it.
But I thi, I, I think that would be, uh, the normal place to look for it is just sitting right underneath wherever the master plan is, just put another, another link for the Quick Strategy Guide, and maybe mark it as an appendix or just let, just leave it as it is. It's Quick Strategy Guide. It was approved in uh,
What, March, whatever that, uh, it was, the fourth, the fourth Wednesday of March is when the trustees approved it.
So we want the Quick Strategy Guide under the master plan.
Or, or together with, you know.
Or together with it.
Yeah.
Amanda.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was one point. Uh, we have two articles from the Strategic Planning, uh, Committee to rev, not to review tonight, simply to, uh, instead of hearing on, I think it would be a mistake to really, um, dig into it in too much detail because it has not been advertised yet. Uh, but we can certainly, you know, in general terms, you know, what's there, what do we plan to do with it, et cetera. The third thing I wanted to mention is that tomorrow night, uh, here, um, at the Strategic Planning Committee meeting, we will have three, um, executives from, uh, Delaware County, Tiffany Magg, who is the, uh, Director of the Delaware County Regional Sewer District. Um, we'll have Monica Connors and Tyler Lane, who are both from the Office of Economic Development. And they'll be talking about their their take on what's happening and how we can coordinate our efforts with theirs. So that'll be here tomorrow night, starting at six thirty.
Okay, and I have a question, uh, that you may have some information about. Uh, just have, had a conversation with Joe Place today about something he's bringing forward in the future. And he mentioned that, um, the county has been working on a different plan and that potentially they're creating a new street which will be a connector, east-west connector. Which will be a connector, east-west connector. Strategic planning, or you got anybody aware of what's going on?
But didn't uh, didn't our traffic uh, our, our learns committee say that there was talk of that? But there was just talk, we were supposed to get together with them.
Okay, well, Joe brought it up because he's anticipating that down the road. He, that may end up resulting in him having to make some changes in his PRCD.
Well, it's gonna make a lot of people change, but. The last we heard, they had what, made it to Galena on their planning on across county.
Yeah, well, one of the things that when Holly met with the transportation group talking about roads. It, it stemmed from the fact of how much participation was Delaware County having within the Lincoln County group that published that big study. It did uh have some indication of some things in Harlem Township that uh might be necessary. But you know, what, uh, what Holly walked away from and what she told me from the meeting was that, you know, when we looked at uh. Population density studies, which helped drive what the traffic patterns would be, which lead to studies. Then they didn't really want to consider that they being Delaware County until. Uh, decisions were made on the new overlays and what some of the other zoning opportunities might be.
Okay.
Those were approved, then they could go back and, and estimate through their models what traffic would be. So. I, I would tell you, you know, I'm a little surprised that they say they're actively talking about specific roads because it wasn't more than. Four weeks ago when Holly met with them that they weren't willing to talk about that level specificity. So. Maybe we'll learn some more tomorrow night, but that sounds different than anything we've heard up till at least three or four weeks ago.
Okay. So we need to find out more information, basically is where we are.
We're working on, yes, absolutely. We were working on the assumption they were waiting for the overlays and then they were gonna, the way it was put to us is. They were gonna do a traffic count without the traffic. In other words, they were gonna look at the zoning and the possible number of people and cars.
They may, they, somebody must have said something to Joe, so that's why he asked me about it. I said, no, I'm not aware of anything.
Well, we got one from um. Delaware County Regional Planning, his comments were totally different. And then Delaware Engineering and other, and Lincoln County. I mean, all these people are getting inputs, but nothing's concrete. In other words, there's all this, well, I think it should go here or we think it should go there, we're planning on this. Nothing concrete.
Okay.
Good to have the information. We'll take it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe say where they were going to make a new street.
Uh, no. It wouldn't, I don't know exactly where the street would be, but he was uh. Asking or about it in the sense that it potentially could have an impact on where they, where depending on where they're putting it. That, but the PRCD that we've recommended, hopefully the trustees are going to approve that at their meeting and then if. If something changes, then Joe will have to come back to us and change and get approval for that. If he has to change any of his layout.
Well, was he talking about the plane property? So.
We're talking about the, the Duncan Runs Estates is the name of the project, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so uh.
An east-west connector through your front yard.
Yes, yeah. Uh, that was uh, that was a connector and, and I think it's been shot down. That's the one where they wanted Bobbins Red to come through. They, they, they were drawing a line through there. That's, that's so far been shot down. So.
Okay, well, we'll just have to wait and see, I guess.
Yeah, but that's, that's what that was and uh, it didn't make any sense. It was too far north. And, and it didn't cover, it just cut the tip of all that. Um, property that's going to be developed. That's on the north tip of it. It needs to sort of wind down through there. So uh, that's what we want to talk to.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Um. Other commission members, you have any?
I was just gonna say, Mike and I went and walked Bill Lane's property with him. Um, along with Joe Clayce. And. So just, you know, discussing how. If the township was interested in potentially allowing PRCDs on lower acreage lots. Or if Joe could somehow sort of combine that with the PRCD on the other side of Harlem Road. To do conservation because Bill Lane's property. Has Duncan Run going right through it and a lot of wooded area and a lot of land that he wants to. Make sure is protected, um, but then also give himself the ability to split, split some lots off. So. Nothing is happening with that yet, nothing concrete, but it was just. Something that Joe is thinking about and, and discussing with. With Bill Lane, so we'll see what happens.
Did, did he look into, do you know, any kind of conservation district or easement uh? Kind of thing on it rather than a, a zoning kind of issue.
I believe he did. He had said he had looked into. Something I thought with, with putting. A protective easement over, over the back by Duncan Run, but.
Yeah, he didn't talk a lot about the back part because he's not gonna do anything with it.
He.
He was, it was pretty much the front is.
Yeah.
Where he's gonna split off those two lots and.
And so, so basically what it boils down to, he has the acreage to do three separate lots regardless. But if he were able to do it in some sort of PRCD fashion, he could put. He could put those two new houses, his house would stay, put the two new houses closer to one another and hidden back in that wooded area at the front of his property. So that it really doesn't change the visual from the road or from his house or anything like that. So. I think it's something, uh, something that needs to be considered. I don't know how often any of you are on realtors' websites, but there are empty. Properties up, up near Intel listed for nine million dollars, five acres without a house. So. Whether any of us want to believe it or not. People are coming and so I think we need to do what we can to make sure we have good options for those people because. People figure out a lot of creative ways to fit a bunch in if they can sell. Five acres for nine million dollars. I haven't seen any of those sell, by the way. When they do, I'm out of here. Yes, yes, I know, but what I'm saying is I, like, I think this needs to continue. I think we need to push these through as. As quickly as possible and I think. I think we had discussed even with Scott Sanders last week, the thought of maybe reducing the minimum on a PRCD and I think there is. Sense to maybe revisit that, but.
Well, um, thank you for sharing that. And that actually, I mentioned that I talked to Joe. He mentioned that to me also today, that that was something that. He was still working on and I don't know, he didn't have any target date as to when, you know, he might be bringing something forward. But he did mention that he was working on what you just described.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think Bill is in a huge rush, but Joe.
I've talked to Bill too. He brought me over to show me the plan that.
Yeah.
Temp preliminary plan.
Yeah.
Did Joe?
I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just don't know how we're, you know, we're not in a position at this point to actually deal with anything, but uh.
Well, they're not ready to present anything, but it's just.
Right.
Good conversations to have moving forward.
Right. I'm happy to hear that Bill's interested in doing that kind of preservation for his land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tom, did you have a comment?
Um, I was, did Joe just talk to you at all about the Clark property?
No, that one did not come up.
So we don't know if that's still.
No, he, he talked about another property that's further north. That, that was why he was uh, uh, calling to, to speak about that particular property. But it's, it's north of Center Village. Okay, um. New business, new article numbers. Um, I put this on as an item simply because. As at this point. Um. Having attended the last strategic planning committee, it was apparent that, you know, we're working on potentially five new articles. And I looked through our existing zoning resolution and we only have one. Article in there or number in there that's not used. Uh, and it didn't make sense to use that for anything. If we put these all together at the end. Article thirty is uh the last one that we have utilized and it is uh for severability and re- and repeal. Um, and then it, there's one other one in here that, um, now I don't remember which one it was, but it. It's reserved for future use. That's number twenty-three, so. Um. I don't know what we might decide to come back and use that one for at some point, but. With these um, articles pertaining to the procedures and the overlay districts, it seems to me to make sense that we would use. Starting at thirty-one and then go up. So that's why I put those down that way. Uh, at this time, when they were dealing with it at strategic planning, they didn't put numbers on them. That uh would be adopted. Uh, the copies that we have. Just have, I think it has four X's.
Three X's.
One of them has three, the other.
Oh, one of them has three, one of them has four. Uh, but that's not intended to be the number.
Oh, okay.
The new article number would have, what, for this one, let's see, this is planned unit development, mixed use overlay district procedures. Yeah. This would be thirty-one. Article thirty-one, procedure to apply for a PUD overlay district. But this is the document, these two documents are the ones that were reviewed with. Uh, strategic planning and strategic planning um, recommended. Or, yeah, they recommended them to us for our consideration. Molly Ridge is here tonight. Molly is uh working with Holly. Holly had another commitment, so Molly is here. Um, and if we have questions about any, anything regarding the numbering, et cetera, we can. Address that to her and with regard to the status, we're, I don't. As Tom mentioned earlier, we're not gonna spend time going through and discussing the specifics of these articles, but I do want us to. Think about this numbering system and see if, if basically we as a group are in agreement that. Using the numbers as I've listed them here makes sense to the group, to the zoning commission, to do it in that fashion. Yeah.
I mean, I think in a perfect world, I would have probably put them up by the other districts, but that's a. A big headache and I'm not sure it's worth, worth all of that moving around.
Yeah.
Cause any, anytime we have sections referenced, we don't want to have to go through and change.
Then you'd have to revise all the rest of it.
Yeah, yeah, so. I don't, I don't love it, but I think it's the, the best option we have.
Thank you. That's what I thought too. Um, okay, um, and then. Moving on to the idea that we would set hearing dates for these, that's something that um. I've already heard them mentioned that, and you said in Virginia that, you know, we need to. Push these things forward and that's of course, the uh. Push that's coming from the strategic planning committee. They want us to do it as quickly as we can. And in fact, although as a group, I haven't heard the trustee say that, I know for certain that one trustee member. Is very much in favor of pushing this process forward. Um, so with that in mind. Uh, what I would like to ask the, for us. For consideration here tonight is that we would set dates for uh beginning these two. Uh, documents that we have.
Can, can we back up just a little bit to the, your numbers here? Um, I'm trying to figure out which. Which these are.
So the one that says article XXX.
Yeah.
That would become thirty-one.
Okay, so that is the procedure for a, to apply for a PUD overlay district. This also has mixed use overlay procedures in it?
Yeah, it's, it's basically the mixed use is a PUD and it falls under the um, ORC. Um, authorization to, to, to write a PUD, to, to uh, to zone for a PUD. So that would be thirty-one. And the other article that we're looking at, the one that's four X. Um, would be um. Thirty-four. That would be XXXIV. Um, and I think uh, if we, if we agree on these four new article numbers. Then we can, we can actually do a redline copy of the existing. Of the current document and, and insert those, those article numbers and. Um, insert the proper sections, cause all the sections will have to be renumbered or, or given an actual number. They're just. Kind of section XXXO one.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. I personally, I don't have a problem with these five new article numbers. Um, and if we agree, I, I think we just, you know, just go with them and. I don't know about planning for the future.
Well, it kind of makes sense to keep the, since another. Set of procedures is being developed. Or residential conservation overlay districts, which would apply to then the existing PRCD and the CRCD. The CRCD being. Um, clustered residential conservation district. That one, the strategic planning doesn't have ready yet, but they're gonna be dealing with that one tomorrow night.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we've already gone through, I think, two, two, two iterations of it. So we may vote on tomorrow. And get that one um forwarded to the zoning commission too.
Um.
But for right now, I think the, the most important thing is to focus on these mixed use, the procedure and the actual text. Uh, because that's the, the most sensitive area in the township that, that's, that's at, at risk.
Let me ask, uh, let's ask you Molly, um, with regard to these. Potentially changing nothing, changing nothing in here, but getting the numbering in it. Um, how? How much time or how difficult will that be for you to do that and get us a clean copy? Okay. Um. Well, the reason I'm asking that is what I'm thinking is that then if we set a hearing date, if we had the. Article numbers, the way that we're going to actually, that we want to set them up in the document. It's not changing any of the content that strategic planning has done. We're just changing the article numbers. Would that, would that make sense?
I think it might make easier if we're gonna post these to.
Cause we're gonna end up, we have to post it.
And at least you're referring to an article that corresponds to an article thirty-one in the heading.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Um. And you say shouldn't be a problem, you could take care of it tomorrow. I got three strategic planning committee members here. Anybody have any issues with us doing that? It's not changing any content at this point and we're not, we can't change the content. Um, I mean, we're, we're gonna do a hearing on the articles and would we. Uh, set the hearing date. If we're actually going to, you refer to them by these numbers and what, I think it would, as Tom just pointed out, it would make it less confusing. If the numbers match rather than.
With the current number.
Yeah, yeah.
When we sent these to you, we didn't have that yet. That's the only reason it's not.
I understand why it was the, had done that way, sure.
Um, so you'll, in the, in the, uh, in the title, it'll sit for the procedures, it'll say article thirty-one. And then in the sections, it'll, you'll also update those to thirty-one. Dot O one, oh, oh, two. Whatever. All right, I mean, I think if, it, it makes it look more like. Um. Uh, what the finished document will look like. The only thing that we're not. If you look at B three, uh, it still has. Kind of sections, just open sections.
Under which article are you looking at?
Um, I'm article thirty-one procedures.
Okay, and D B?
B number three.
D three.
B as in boy.
Oh, B as in boy.
So the first page.
Thank you.
So these, these two red, yellow highlighted section numbers. Um, I don't think there's any way for you to fill those in and, I mean, kind of.
So that would just be when we. That would just be referencing them in for a long as care, right?
Um, I think it's actually referencing something above it. So it'll probably be referencing B if one or B two.
Oh, I see, yeah. I can just, yeah, these, these, all these updates I can, you know.
Right. Um, so there's another one on, on the second page. So there's another one on, on the second page. On C, where the traffic impact study, that may be the same. There's another one on page five.
Okay, I got you now, any place that you're seeing that highlighting?
So there's five, there's five of those section numbers that you highlighted. If you could figure out what those. Are referencing.
I imagine you know this is what, but there are some that are not highlighted. Do a search.
Okay.
Now, we don't have, uh, on the mixed use district then, this would be article thirty-four. Is there a similar issue there, Tom, or not?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, you have section double X dot O one, it should become. Thirty-four dot O one.
Yeah.
I don't think any of them are really issues, more so just. Need to be done, and it sounds like they will be, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, anybody have any other questions?
I'm confused.
Go ahead, well, that's why we're trying to get it clarified, so ask the question.
Thirty-one, is this supposed to be procedures to apply to all of the? Following articles?
No.
Or?
It will apply to the.
Just the mixed use?
The mixed use overlay district and. To the one that will be forthcoming for Center Village.
Why is it, why is this thirty-one then, and this is thirty-four, why aren't these together? Why are they separate?
They're separate because the procedures. We've. It just seemed to like it would be logical to keep the two sets of procedures that are being developed together, that's why thirty-one is the. Mixed use overlay district procedures and thirty-two is the conservation district procedure.
So.
I find that.
Are you saying you would rather procedures and then the ones that applies to, and then another procedure and then once it applies to?
Thirty-one.
Maybe. I just think they should be either one after the other, or.
But the procedures are not necessarily, I mean, so take for example. If we come up with a procedure, what's, what, what is marked as thirty-two here? On residential conservation districts, which will at some point. Guide the procedure for both the P R C D, which we already have, which is article thirteen. And the C R C D, which we're still working on, uh, which would be article thirty-three. So where are you going to put that procedure? Right, I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, there's, there's going to be procedure, it's going to have its own standalone article. There's no way that you can. Put it next to article thirteen and article whatever thirty-three. So. We just kept the two procedures together.
Still doesn't quite sit right with me, even the, the P R C D being combined with the C R C D is confusing to me also. But.
Well, think of them as conservation residential districts. They both conservation residential districts.
And really, the only difference between the existing P R C D and the C R C D is the density, because one has sewer and one doesn't. Other than that, they're very, very similar and the procedures. Are likely to be almost identical, if not absolutely identical.
And that's. We had been talking with Scott Sanders about pulling the procedures out.
Is that what, so that's what we're doing here?
They would be if, if, yeah, it's the P R C D and the C R C D procedures then would be separated.
So I think this goes back to my previous point of, I don't think there's a perfect location for everything to be, and I think we're better just getting it located somewhere and then. Once, once things settle down and we feel like we have this running smoothly, if we want to do another overhaul of the resolution and try to like. Get these in a more sensical spot, we can do it then, but I don't, I, I mean, I think we could go. Around in circles for hours on this, and I think we should just. Stick it somewhere and go. I know that's not a great solution, but I, I don't think we're going to come to a great solution that appeases everyone.
So what we're. What the, the planning committee was trying to do was to develop, I mean, these are all overlay districts that we're working on, like the P R C D, so it doesn't. Change the underlying zoning, it gives you, it gives the landowner another option, or the potential landowner another option. With the conservate, the residential conservation districts, whether they're with or without sewer, we think that those are. Close enough in terms of how they're developed and what the, the, the guidelines will be, that we can handle them with a single procedure. And that's going to be what now is number thirty-two, right? It'll, it'll be referenced in both of the articles for. The planned residential and the clustered residential as this article's the procedure that you follow if you want to apply for either one of these two districts. It really doesn't fit the mixed use district, cause there you've got. Commercial, you've got much more, much denser residential development, it, it, it doesn't. The same procedure doesn't work, and that's why we've got this article thirty-one, which is just for these. Planned unit developments, which. Is kind of the category that a mixed use fits under.
I, I confess that, and, and I know everybody, I think, except me, was, was feeling the need to pull out the procedures. I really like everything together in one article, just because when somebody comes in, you give them one article to deal with. And now you're going to have to give them two articles to deal with.
Well, they have one article, it's just that within that article, it references the procedures.
Which is another article.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, okay, yeah, it's another article, but the reference is right there within the document. And I trust that people can read that and then find the article that are the procedures.
No, it, it doesn't, it's just, to me, it's, it's so much more, it's so much easier to have it in one place.
But then you'd be duplicating the procedures.
Yes, you are.
And that requires more work on our part, because then if we change. Text or the, the procedure on one, you have to make sure to change it on the other.
And then we have to remember if there are any differences between the two sets of procedures, whereas if everything.
Which we know that that's been a problem in the past.
Yes.
So I think that, you know, we, we kind of working through the P R C D. We kind of. Could see that the procedures were a real issue for all of us. Whether or not they were embedded in the article or not, the procedures need to be streamlined and, and fixed. And I think this was one way of saying. If we have a procedure that deals with more than one. District, don't include it with all of those districts, just pull it out standalone. It applies to A, B, and maybe something else down. Maybe there'll be a third kind of residential conservation district. But we don't even imagine, I don't know what it would be, but. Or certainly on the mixed use side, there could be. Other applications. Under that planned unit development that we haven't, haven't even worked on. That, that was the thinking behind it, why we wanted to. Have it as a standalone.
Are we keeping our standalone P U D? District, which you already have in the book.
If the stand, the, the P U D is not an overlay, it is a zoning district.
Right.
The same way we have a P R D, we have a planned residential district. Now, how those are going to. Work together, I don't, I'm not sure we, certainly this, the, the planning committee has not looked at that yet. And Holly has not talked about how those things work together.
Is that confusing to call this a P U D when we already have a P U D?
We. Mike and I looked at this and we had made some changes, but these were not, these were. The, this is the document that we got from strategic planning, and that's what. We're going to start with.
Yeah, we can schedule, and what I was going to suggest as a recommendation for this committee. Or the commission here to consider is that. We look at scheduling the hearing. And rather than. Scheduling the initial hearing in May. I'm going to recommend and suggest that we would look at scheduling the first hearing on April the twenty-fourth. Which is twenty-one days from now. Because we're not going to finish it in one setting. And then we can make any, we can, we will make the changes that we want to make as a zoning commission. As it came from. Strategic planning, and then we'll recess and then complete the process in a follow-up meeting. And still get it done in time for the trustees to receive it at their May meeting. Which is what the trustees want to get accomplished.
So you want to schedule the, the first hearing on both of these? For April?
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, and then we'll have one week to. Do the, the, the end of the hearings.
If it goes on further than that, it'll have to, but, you know.
Doesn't have to be on May the first, but yes, we could do it on May the first. We can schedule another, the, the, the follow-up at a, at any time. But the first one needs to be within the twenty to forty day.
Right, but I, I don't see how we're going to get a clean copy. Before May first, then, if we've only. Met on the twenty-fourth.
I think the hope is with the stru- strategic planning committee, having members from all of the existing township boards. That there won't be much cleaning up to do.
That's always the hope, but we've never had that happen.
Oh, we, I don't think we've done something like this before, where we've had a strategic planning committee and an outside planner. Hired to help with it, I think, I think this is a new beast in general, so I'm, I'm going to go into it optimistically and hope that. There's not much cleaning up to do.
Let me come back to you again, Holly, if, if. Whatever changes the zoning commission might make in this first draft. On, if we have that hearing on the twenty-fourth. Would you be able to turn around and give us? The changes in a revised document within a week, or if not a week, how long would it take?
This, this is very hard priority for me especially, this is like one of my main. So we can definitely.
And Mike, I would go on a limb and speak for the strategic planning committee and say. And if we needed to meet on sort of emergency basis, following the twenty-fourth, get that week like. Twenty-fifth or sixth, we would do that. To ensure we were all in sync coordination wise, so we're on a path, but by the time you get the May first document. You've got something really to go.
Yeah, well. Once. It's come from strategic plan, you've made the recommendations to us, the zoning commission is considering it. If we, as a zoning commission, want to make some changes, it doesn't necessarily have to go back to the strategic planning committee.
I understand.
But it could. Okay, I see what you're pointing out now, yeah. But. The. The idea is try to set this up in such a way that we can move the process forward quickly. And the soonest that we could schedule a hearing would be. The April the twenty-fourth. To get the process started.
That's fine with me.
And I've been living with this for months, so. It's, it's fine with me.
Well, that's, I, I. I'm suggesting it, so obviously I'm saying it's fine with me to try to, to do it on the twenty-fourth.
Seven thirty?
Since it's a special meeting, it's just going to be for the hearing, yes, it would be, we could start it at seven thirty, we could start earlier if you would prefer. I wouldn't want to start any earlier than seven, though.
Yeah, I have trouble making quite at seven.
Sure, that's fine, I'm just offering that as an option, so okay, seven thirty on the twenty-fourth. Will be the hearing date. For.
Both.
Both of these procedures and. Molly, you are going to go ahead and make the changes in terms of the numbering. So we're talking about article thirty-one being planned unit development mixed use overlay district procedures. And then we're talking about article thirty-four, the mixed use. Mixed used districts.
Now, Mike, do we? Is it, is the concern starting both hearings, or are we doing it as, we're doing two separate hearings?
Oh, well, we're starting, they have to be two separate hearings, yeah.
So maybe we should start them at slightly different times.
That's correct.
So one at seven thirty and one at. Seven forty-five that we could push back if we had to.
Well, we'll start one at seven thirty and then we can start, I don't, I don't, it's not going to. We're not going to do it in fifteen minutes, I don't think.
We're not going to read it in fifteen minutes.
Get to the second.
Well, so it's not the workshop meeting, there's no two hour limit.
Then you might be counting me out, because I'm not standing.
How much time do you think we should? Put in as a span here, we could do it from. Seven thirty. And which one we would put down at seven thirty would be.
A shorter one.
The shorter one, mixed use overlay district.
Let's just do seven thirty and then eight, because as you say, we're like a bus, we can't, can't leave early, so let's.
We can push it back if we have.
Yes, let's not sit here waiting for our next thing to.
That's right, we don't want to do that, but I don't think we can get it finished in fifteen minutes.
I don't think so either, and I'm.
So we'll say seven thirty for thirty-one and eight o'clock for mixed use.
Is there a reason why the, the mixed use district is not called an overlay? Or it is down here, but it's not a here.
That, that's a good point, it's probably, it probably needs to be called an overlay in the heading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but for right now. We're not changing it, I mean, we can change that. When we have our hearing, but yes. But we're not going to ask Molly to make that change, because. All we're looking at is giving it a number that will make sense. Cause. The numbers that are there now, you can't have an article thirty, we've already got an article thirty on the books.
I just wanted to make sure that this mixed use district or article thirty-four. Went with this procedure where it's called an overlay district, but here it wasn't, just wanted to make sure they go together.
No, you're absolutely correct, they go together.
Okay.
And they are both, I mean, not they both, they both apply only to overlay districts. So the word overlay should be in there, but right now it's not.
Okay. Okay, but it's the same.
Asking the question, though.
And it probably shouldn't say, it probably shouldn't say mixed used, but.
Right.
I'm not going to get into it.
That's a typo for sure.
So it, let's, it's, so we're saying seven thirty on the procedures, eight o'clock on the text of the overlay district. And we'll do what we have to.
And this is the twenty-fourth, April the twenty-fourth.
Monday.
Monday, April the twenty-fourth.
Well, Mike is going to have to advertise those, but. You do that, or Amanda does that?
Amanda will do it, yeah, well. Yeah, we'll initiate the advertising process. And then once we have the copies back from you, Molly. Then that will be made available. For people to potentially come in if they don't. Want to access it online. Come in and review a copy here, or it will be posted online so that they can review, because in the past. We post them up on the. Outside door, well, you.
Yeah.
You've got booklets here, but then what we do is put up a note that says that they're available. Make an appointment, or they, the office is open, come in and see the zoning assistant, and then they can review. The document. That's the way it has worked in the past.
And for what it's worth, I would imagine that these two articles should be posted. Wherever the comprehensive plan is posted and wherever the quick strategy guide is posted, just three and four just below those. Help people find it.
But you would, you want to, you don't want them posted there before they're approved, though, right?
No, we have, I think, I, we do want, we do want them posted so that people will come in.
She does a special place when she puts the meetings on there, then she posts what it is. Your document will be posted with, with the.
On the public notice, yeah.
Okay, so, so there's a link there on the calendar.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
The one that goes up there under our zoning heading tab. Should be, should be the approved stuff.
It won't go up there. It won't go up there.
Good point, good point.
It would only go with the notice, the public notice. There could be a link there. Yeah. Okay, so that's good. We'll get started, um, take the process forward. On the twenty fourth. And.
And the other thing that Mike had, uh, when you do the advertisement, uh. Is the zoom, you're simply going to say that it has a zoom link? Which you're not going to give the zoom link.
Yeah, we, we can, we can do it however, whatever way you want.
Um, because. We wanted to have a common zoom link that. That, that wasn't going to change if. We had to continue the meeting to another day. Uh, but that zoom link should be linked in the calendar. So if you click on the, on the listing on the calendar, it brings up that, the link in whatever documents. No, that's fine.
Okay, oh. We can potentially create a new. Me, um, zoom meeting. That will be a recurring meeting. And use it only for hearings. But could be used for. The same number, I mean, would be then be referred back to for any time we were scheduling a hearing. But it wouldn't have to be. A new unique number each time. It'd be the same number because we can schedule it as a recurring meeting. I think that might be a better way to do it. We have been using our regular zoning commission meeting. But that's. Works fine when we're scheduling the hearings on the night of the zoning commission, but since these are going to be special meetings. I think maybe we'll create another. Category and have another recurring meeting out there. We've got a recurring reading for our regular meetings. We've got a recurring meeting for our. Um, workshop meeting and we'll have a, we can create a recurring. Zoom meeting or hearings.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Molly, thank you. The CRCD. Tom, you indicated that the, uh, strategic planning is going to be working on that tomorrow night, so that might be forthcoming, um. Russa be dealing with in May also. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna schedule another hearing for that till obviously it comes forward. We'll, we'd not be dealing with that till May. Then if they're going to bring that forward, you're also going to have to have the procedures to come at the same time.
Yes. And we haven't, I mean, that.
You haven't started on that.
We haven't started on the procedures because that's kind of. We have to coordinate that with what Scott Sanders is gonna bring back.
And, um, that will be. We'll be moving that process forward at next week at Monday's workshop meeting. Scott will be here. Hey, there's one other thing that I wanted to, I, I ran off copies of this. It's not a part of the. Uh, mixed use overlay district. Um, it was a part of that, but it's.
Molly, um. Am I correct that we are waiting to do the procedures for the CRCD? Until we hear back from Scott Sanders on how he's, I mean, we're trying to get a. A common procedure for both of those. And, yeah.
Do you have, you know, a draft? But I'll have to follow up with Holly to see if she talked to me now or under.
Yeah.
What's going on.
So. He will be here next Monday with his second draft.
I, I don't really have.
Tom, what time's your meeting tomorrow?
Six thirty.
The boundaries for the, uh, Harum Township mixed use and CRCD overlay districts. Have been drawn on a map. And while they are. Identified specifically in here, these would be the over, I was putting one out there. If you don't mind. Pass it on over to Bruce there. And then going this way. Oh, you've got one. Here, Mike. Okay. Not that we're going to do anything with it other than for people to be aware of it. Have these been adopted yet? That's, that's my question, Molly and strategic planning folks.
Yeah.
Have these actually been adopted now?
It's been, yeah, I mean, this, this is coming from strategic planning as their. These are, these are the boundaries for the districts, the text and the districts that we're working on.
Okay.
So mixed use A and B is article thirty four.
And is there then a description? A written description of the boundaries within article thirty four?
Uh, there's a map or there, there, there will be a map. I don't know if it's, it's actually. What page was, you know what? Page is there.
This it?
Um, is on page two actually of the mixed use district. So this map that's in the text. Has the same outline as the dark blue and light blue. On this.
Okay, well, just makes it easier to see.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, this has, um, maybe easier to see the individual, individual parcels. On this full page rather than on this. Smaller one.
And what is this area between the two?
Um, the. The other two areas are the CRCD areas. Um, so one would be two dwelling units per acre. The other would be three dwelling units per.
So the two dwellings per acre. Is the one that is the top one.
Further than that, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's outlined in blue. And then the three dwellings per acre for the clustered residential conservation district. Is the one that has a red line on the bottom. Uh, with the blue line showing on the top. I think the red is there also. You just can't see it for. Clearly.
Yeah.
So this was provided for information purposes. It's not, um. I don't know. Whether there's an, another use for it at this point, though, that, that's, it matches what is actually in. Article thirty four. It's just thirty four has a very small. Image at the top of the page. Yeah. So this is not going to, was not intended to become a part of.
That I think is up to us, um, if we feel that this is. Because at some point we're going to be asked, somebody's going to. Really come in with an application and you're going to say, what's your parcel ID, right? And you're going to look on the map and kind of locate it. It's a lot easier to locate it on this than it is located on, on this.
Well.
Right.
Yes, but if, if we're going to make, if this is going to end up at some point becoming a part of the article. Um, you wouldn't want the clustered. On the same map.
Correct.
It would only re, it would only relate to the mixed use area.
That's correct.
Okay. But these are the proposed boundaries that have been finalized.
And we've, we've already been asked to move them.
No. By whom?
By, by a landowner.
Me. I'll buy a landowner.
And, and we, we, we went, we went through it for probably half an hour. At the, during the planning committee meeting and we finally decided. No, this is, these were the boundaries that we showed the community during the community meetings.
Okay.
Boundaries that will stay unless somebody comes back to.
Okay, but I had, at the last meeting that Holly was here, I had asked her. Specifically about the center village area and she assured me that those boundaries were not set in stone and. Yes, they could add.
We haven't got there yet.
Well, you have on the south side of it. If you're setting the. Cluster here.
It's, that part of it is still pretty fluid.
So with my understanding, you were more concerned about the north section.
Well, there's the north section. There's also that, you know, the large lots behind like the Church of Christ or.
Cluster, there's a reason for that. I mean, it's not just somebody throw darts at it.
No, but I, I would have thought that you might have considered including some of these large areas like. Beside the northeast Church of Christ and, you know. Those areas closer around the, the park and, and stuff.
Yeah, those, uh. Felt to be viable. For what we want. Where we thought that, uh, based on who the owners are and some of the other parcels. That were possibly available to us, north of Center Village and, and right on Center Village Road. Uh, would be a good expansion point for the walkable communities. I've had a lot of thought went into it and, and also the viability. Uh, you know, of eventually retaining that ground for, you know, development. Uh, versus it just sits there and is sort of a waste.
Though, Johnny, in my mind, if we're trying to create a walkable village. Center Village.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not even sure it'll go down as far as northeast Church of Christ. Because to walk from there up to Center Village Road. Is a hall. And then to walk from there out to.
It's basically just from the, the edge of the park up to Center Village Road. Northeast, I, there, there, there's a one.
It's no.
Property in between, but.
Yeah, there's one property.
You've got, you've got Ryan's and then you've got, so you know, the, the, the restaurant owner who sold. Um, so there's, I mean, there's two big properties. You can say, do we want it here on which side of the church? Stop it at the church, stop it north of the church. Those are details that, that we can hash out. But, and whether we want to have it bounded on, on Duncan Run or for the north. I think all of that is, is still, once we get into the Center Village and we really didn't. Focus on that because we really wanted to get this blue area done because that's where.
Okay.
The danger is.
So what it, um, what I'm hearing then is that really what is currently set. Is just the blue area, the mixed use areas. The clustered housing areas, even though we're showing on the map and this is probably where they're going to be.
We have not voted on those yet.
Those have not really been finalized.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So that, that makes it clearer.
So. Uh, Ma, do you want to talk to Holly and George in the morning and maybe get us a version of this with just the. The blue, just the blue area and take out all the other.
Yeah.
The other lines, at least for now.
For our purposes of what we're dealing with and for the hearings that were scheduled. We need one that would just be dealing with the blue area only.
Okay, and then we can post that with the. With the, the texts themselves.
Yeah, for that map, that type map with the. Without the actual.
Satellite image.
Features on there to be shown in the text instead of what we currently have. People feel like it's kind of difficult.
I think this is easier than the satellite one, but. If this is getting added somewhere to. I don't know.
No, this, the size difference is.
Hmm, that definitely helps, but if I don't have access to this anywhere else in here, then yes, I'd prefer this to the satellite image one.
And we probably have to change the title on it, at least temporarily. Proposed boundaries for the mixed use and not the CRC overlay anymore.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, let me make sure.
Insistent.
Yeah, if you give us that, then potentially as we're going through our, uh, hearing and our review process. We potentially can end up making a recommendation to take out this. Satellite image and replace it with the map. But we don't, we don't have to have that done. I don't, I don't expect that to be done. In this draft that we're going to initially start the process with.
The one, the one real advantage to the, um. The satellite is it includes the names of the roads. So that people can immediately place it.
Could that be added to this? This is the map we made, so we can.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but if you would be able to go ahead and, uh, create that as a separate. Overlay map or just the blue area, taking off the CRCD overlay districts. That would be useful and helpful as we're trying to deal with that.
And then for the actual document that you'll review, it'll have, you know, the updated numbers over place that map, obviously. Uh, anything, yeah, we'll have all of these changes made for when you all contribute.
Yeah, okay, and now earlier when we were talking about it, you said you could potentially have that. Ready in a day, so.
You don't have to be contingent upon Holly fixing the map, but it's. I mean, I could put a placeholder in anyways with the map that we have currently. I can just kind of edit it out.
Well, the one, the one that's there, yeah, we, we would leave in the document for right now. That's fine. This one. We don't have to take it out for now. But we're wanting the other one to be available. To us for use and reference as we're going through the process. How soon would you be able to have this available because, um, like I said, we will. Want to proceed with the posting and get that out there. We have to do it. And we have to make the, um, have to get the, the posting out so that it's at least ten days prior to the hearing, so. Normally what we would, what would happen is after we set the dates for the hearing, then the next day, that information gets transmitted to the Delaware Gazette. But we're going to have to delay that for a day or two. How soon will it come back from you? Would be my question.
I, that is possibly if I personally do, so I don't know if you would. Specifically, but I, I mean, I think you can get it.
I'm not referring to the map when I'm asking that question. I'm only referring to. The articles.
I, I said a day, right? It was a day.
Okay, so you'll be able to have this back to me tomorrow.
Yes, for sure.
Okay. That's what I was trying to clear. I know it got a little confusing there because we were talking about the map. But I'm just referring to the articles themselves. Okay. All right, good. And you get that back to me. And then I'll communicate with you about it, Mike, in terms of how we'll proceed to get the postings up and out. Okay? All right, very good. Um. The one other item that we had on the agenda, uh, looking at overall, uh, plans and calendar, well. We've been discussing it already to the extent that. We've already made one adjustment in terms of, uh, expectation of scheduling a special meeting. Scott will be, uh, coming back next week, um. At this point, it seems to me that I don't know that we'll be able to continue to move forward with anything other than the PRCD. For a while. I don't want to get started on the rest of the zoning resolution. Feels, it feels like to me we should go ahead and deal with the PRCD. And then deal with what's coming forward from the strategic planning committee. Before we start jumping into other aspects of the zoning resolution in terms of making revisions. Am I making sense when I'm trying to describe that?
Yeah, in terms of what Scott's working with us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, he obviously is already started on the PRCD and has indicated that's where he wanted to start, so. We'll continue that process, but I'm not sure we're ready to jump into other articles besides that one at this point with Scott.
But we didn't get real far with the PRCD the last time.
I know. So, um. The main thing with, at this point with Scott would need to focus on these procedures and get that process. Moved forward because it is relating now to what strategic planning is dealing with, with. With the clustered conservation district and the development of procedures for that overlay. And we're trying to mesh that so that we've got one set of procedures that would work. With both conservation districts as overlay districts, that is. Um. So. We'll find out exactly how far that has progressed, I guess, when, next week when we, uh, have the meeting with Scott. And then that'll, that'll end up being some kind of a coordination between Scott and what's going on with strategic. And then that'll, that'll end up being some kind of a coordination between Scott and what's going on with strategic planning.
Yeah. I think this, I think from strategic planning's point of view, the biggest thing is to shorten the process so that there's a hearing at the zoning commission level and not a second hearing at the trustees' level. If the trustees get a vote at a meeting, do they approve it? They want to change it? Do they deny it? They don't have to hold their own hearing. That's, that I think is the biggest change in my mind in the existing procedure and in the procedure we're trying to put together. I think Scott was okay with that.
Yeah, he was, because it's not a requirement for it, for the trustees to do that.
Right. And I don't think the trustees are really eager to have all these hearings going on and.
Well, and they said they weren't looking at it until that day anyway, so at that rate.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, so we can write it. You know, if if we can, if if we can tighten the process up so it doesn't take so long. Um, I think everybody would be in favor of that.
Okay. Um, well, I will go ahead and make a contact with Scott to let him know that uh that's going to be the focus. And the goal is to pull that together and and to get that completed. Um.
Yeah.
So that the uh CRCD procedures can move forward uh at the same time that um but once those procedures are established, they would match up with what PRCD is. And we could pull, we then we basically would be pulling the procedures out of PRCD article and have it stand alone.
It'd be Article thirty-two.
As the article or that then will require referencing back to that number and so forth. All right. Okay, a lot going on, folks. We're making progress.
Yep.
Um, public comment?
Great job.
So what I'm hearing is the boundaries for the mixed use, those are set in stone?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Are these boundaries for the blue set in stone?
No. That's what, that's what we established tonight.
The, the shaded blue is set. Yes, I believe since these were the boundaries given at the public meetings, those blue shaded areas.
Oh, the blue shaded area, not the blue line. Yeah.
Yes.
You're, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
But you you do have the option at some point, once these become part of the zoning resolution, to come in and ask for a rezoning.
Do you know how long after um it's voted in that that'll be? Until you have a procedure ready for that?
You know, once an article is in, there's no.
Well.
Once an article's in the resolution, no delay in using it.
The article, we're starting the process with the hearing that we scheduled on April the twenty-fourth. Once we conclude those hearings, um, then the trust, it will be recommended to the trustees. Our goal is to get it to the trustees for their May meeting. And that would mean that if it goes to the May meeting, uh it would be thirty days after that, if the trustees were to approve it on, I don't know the exact date, what is it, May seventeen? If the trustees would approve it on May seventeenth and thirty days later, uh it would go into effect unless there is a referendum uh issue that's brought forward. Because this is a change that would be when the zoning resolution is modified or adopted, a new article is introduced, then that process is referendable. Once it becomes a part of the zoning resolution, then it's then an administrative decision from that point forward. So what we would be looking at potentially is May seventeenth and then thirty days later would be June sixteenth, I guess, thirty days later.
And then that's when I can file to try and extend the boundary or a variance, or I don't know what you call it.
The boundaries for the shaded blue area are set.
Well, what he's talking about is turning one of these light blue to dark blue right along the edge.
Well, they're set right now.
Yeah.
I I've been trying to get them moved just because I thought it made sense that I have a cemetery and commercial in front and then twelve units an acre behind me, and then there's that one that's eight. So it doesn't make sense to me, and I'm probably going to join with Harlem Road Properties, and I'm just trying to skip the headache of having to, you know, file to have it switched.
Right. And it, you you may have to go through that. I think the decision that we made um at the Strategic Planning Committee is for now, that's the way the the boundaries are. Because that's the way we presented it to the community. You want to come in, um, and I'm not sure whether it comes to the zoning commission or the BZA to change the change, well, to change.
Overlay district?
Is it a variance? Or are we saying?
I thought with planned districts, you have to come back to the zoning commission.
Yeah, they wouldn't go to the BZA.
But these are all, these are overlaid.
I agree with that. I think it would go back to you guys. Depending on how he wants to go about it. We're not here to tell him how he wants to go about it. He wants to say, I want to go for variance. He can try that.
We we haven't done it before, so we got to, we got to figure it out the first time.
Yeah.
What's the right way to do it?
Okay.
But yeah, I think one, once it's in place and it's part of the zoning resolution officially, part of the zoning resolution, you can position either the BZA or the zoning commission to extend the overlay district to your property.
Okay. Now, I did hear them in the last meeting. They said the boundaries weren't set in stone. I think it was Joni that uh mentioned that for the Center Village area. So why is it that the blues are set in stone and then the rest of them are?
Because, because the the str- strategic planning committee really hasn't sat down and worked through the Center Village District in detail the way we did for weeks on end on the mixed use area on the southern border.
But it wasn't voted in at the time that they, that Holly said that they could be moved.
She only, she only was referring to the Center Village District at that meeting.
Okay. Well, I just seemed a little biased, I guess, that you can't move the ones down here.
Asked for.
I I don't know that it's biased. It's a matter of timing. We worked on the mixed use district first. Yeah. But we haven't gotten to the Center Village District yet, so the boundaries are still under discussion. We worked through the mixed use district in a lot of detail. Um, and the boundaries that are that are set are the boundaries the way that we agreed to leave them. If you want to go for a rezoning, uh it's it's not.
Is that what it would be, is rezoning?
I I don't know. I don't know. Because.
Something to ask Scott next week.
Well, I think that's something that that we would maybe sit down and talk about.
Yeah.
Once, once the overlay goes into into effect, that is, it's approved through the trustees, then that overlay district applies to the area that is designated.
To apply a different overlay onto his property. He is, he is, correct me if I'm wrong, in the light blue, but he would prefer to have dark blue zoning, and we can't, we don't have this shared on a screen, so it's not.
Yeah, well, I'm not disagreeing with that.
You're in the light blue, correct, Matthew? And you want to be in the dark blue?
Correct, because I've got, you know, a cemetery and commercial up front and then.
But if that.
Twelve, I mean, I just, I guess what's.
That's going to be changed. It has to be changed before the zoning commission approves Article thirty-four.
But the Strategic Planning Committee is saying they are not willing to change it. They've looked through it. This is the conclusion they've come to. So he's asking add a date in the future.
That I understand that.
And the answer is flat out no.
Planning's decision. That's not the zoning commission's decision.
Yes, I understand, but I'm just trying to give Matthew an answer. So is the answer then, once this goes through, then the answer is no, you may not change to be in the dark blue?
That's correct.
Without a referendum.
Well, so I can't apply for.
To be in the dark blue. Um, the only way that that can happen is for the property to exist within the boundary that the zoning commission approves. So if we change the boundaries, we could change the boundaries. This is the recommendation from strategic planning. I'm not saying that that's something that the zoning commission will want to do or should do, but the zoning commission could change the boundaries of the dark blue area because we have not yet approved it.
So now is that something that if if Matthew feels this way, coming to our meeting where we're having.
At the hearing, he can bring it up at that point.
Hypothetical discussion then.
It's, it's open for discussion at that point.
There's no.
It's not open for discussion with Strategic Planning Committee. They've made their recommendation.
Okay. I'm just trying to get clarification so he can, he can have clarification.
Yes, thank you. And it sounds like if I, if I'm not successful.
When we said it's set in stone, it's set in stone at this point by the Strategic Planning Committee. They've already made their decision and they are not willing to make a change in their recommendation, as I understand it.
Yep. And then if I'm not successful at your next hearing on the twenty-fourth, I have the option, you know, come June to either rezone or whatever the name of that would be, variance, or if I'm not successful the, on the twenty-fourth.
Oh.
No.
We're not, it's not a rezone. Well, we're rezoning at that point. What we're talking about is changing the um area that is designated for the overlay area.
So I I think then what his question changes to is if we approve these boundaries that exist as they exist on this map, and he still would prefer to have the dark blue overlay, is there any option for him as an individual property owner to come through and pull down an adjacent overlay on his property? And we are saying as a zoning commission, no, the overlay is what the overlay is. Is there any other option? Is a variance an option, or is that just, that's it? Once it's in the zoning resolution as the overlay district, it's done. So you either have to change our mind during the hearing or you have to do a referendum.
I think it would be, yeah, I think it would be subject to referendum, whatever we decide.
Yes.
At that point. The question is whether that is an option. And I think, you know, land use, that's what we make decisions of. Somebody comes to us and, the same as a PRCD, want a ten acre PRCD.
And I'm not saying we have an answer yet, but I'm saying clearly this is the question of a township resident, and so it's something we need to think about. If there are people who are already next to this, you know, oftentimes we look at adjoining properties and say, well, you're AR one, but all your neighbors are FR one, and so we we factor that in and say, you know, if you want to be FR one, who are we to say, no, all of your neighbors are that way? So in the same vein, at what point do we say you are adjacent to this other mixed use district?
Yeah, I understand that, but I think that that becomes then a legal question, and I don't know the answer to it. But my guess at this point is that once the overlay boundaries are established, we as a zoning commission cannot decide, okay, we're going to extend it. We can't do that.
Okay.
They're set.
So then can.
Legally, I believe that's probably the case, but I don't know. I'm not an attorney.
So can we talk to Scott? Would Scott have a better answer for us?
Well, you can ask him, but he he's not an attorney either. He may, he may give a hypothetical answer, yes.
You raise that tomorrow night and see if Holly has.
That's a good point, too.
Okay.
And so why, before you go to Scott with it, we will raise it with Holly and get back to Mike and and let you know kind of what she thinks procedurally, how that might work.
But what would be the point of establishing boundaries for overlay districts if you didn't stick with?
I'm not disagreeing with any of you on any of that. I'm just saying we are going to have questions like this coming from township residents. We already do. So let's figure out how those are going to be addressed.
Mike?
Yes.
Um, if an individual wants to do something, usually they have a reason. In other words, either he wants to put in something commercial, or he wants to put in apartments. So if they have a plan to do that, couldn't they ask, for instance, he, he's on an eight unit per acre next to a twelve unit per acre, and he wants to go to twelve units, can he get a variance for that?
No.
If 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 he pulls down the uh, if he pulls down the overlay, so I'm in an eight unit overlay and I want to, I want to do.
Doesn't go to BZA if it's an overlay district.
Well, I'm, can you, can you give him?
No.
Huh?
If it's an overlay district, it won't go to the BZA.
Okay, well, I don't care who it goes to. I'm just saying, can he on a specific uh use?
Has to, if it's within the overlay district, he can request a divergence.
Okay, that's, there you go.
But if he's not already within the overlay district, then, I mean, he could request a divergence in terms of uh whether if specific things are prohibited that you can't get a divergence for, and I don't know.
Right.
Because I'm, I'm not familiar with, I'm not familiar with the, what's in here yet.
Yes, the geography, though, normally, so you're calling it a divergence. So would that person have the opportunity to do that divergent based on what was next door? Based on, you know, they had the land, they had the geography, um, and just be a continuation of what was next, next, next to them.
That's, yes, that's, that's possible. Like I said, it's possible for divergence to be granted by the zoning.
So that's fine. I don't care who does. But so now we're getting somewhere that the gentleman drew a divergent and will still check on it tomorrow, but now we're getting somewhere with some kind of.
That, that is a potential. Yeah. So Matthew, we don't have a great answer for you. It sounds like we'll try to get a better answer for you, but it, at this rate, I think coming to the meeting on the twenty-fourth is your best option for getting more of an answer and talking to us more in depth about changing map boundaries.
And I don't know if it makes any difference, but I believe Matt has a PCD, right?
I do not.
You do not? You, you're still under AR one?
Correct. So I guess my logic, though, on the R twelve is it, or the uh changing it from eight to twelve units and acres, I had twelve beside and twelve behind. So it just seemed to make sense to take twelve from the end of Harlem Road, Harlem Road Properties all the way to Fancher. It's just, it, it goes behind me and beside me. But that was my logic on that, I guess.
And and I think on the twenty-fourth, you can, after we've all looked through the document, you can certainly bring that back, and it's still up for discussion there. And other than that, I think we're.
No, I appreciate you guys' help and answers. It, it helped a lot.
We're, we're still struggling with an answer.
I think you need a legal opinion.
Yeah, yeah. And 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 experienced opinion too about how these things are normally handled. And we haven't, we haven't been anywhere near something like this.
I don't know, again, getting, talking about divergence, whether there's anything that's specified in terms of what's limited uh and prohibited when it comes to a divergence. If that's not addressed in here, then divergence will be a matter for the um, for the zoning commission to deal with.
There you go.
No. All right. Thank you.
Is there, is there anywhere that indicates how these boundaries were set, like what the reasoning is?
That was strategic planning.
It's in the quick strategy guide.
Yeah. And it was discussed at those uh community meetings, all in terms of the logical, or the logic, if you will, that was set in guiding that decision with regard to the boundaries. So beyond that, I, I don't have any more details. That's the strategic planning uh decision.
It wasn't just throwing darts. It was all well thought out. Um, first, parcel by parcel, and it's based on, uh, a quick answer would be it's, it's based on eventually getting in a JED and uh, which is a blocking mechanism to keep Lomond and Columbus from annexing into Harlem Township. And so the best way to do a JED would be to have a mixed use because it would have a special tax just to new residents and new owners. And uh, another municipality uh could participate, and then you would stop somebody. And uh, another municipality uh could participate, and then you would stop somebody from coming in. So what areas were most vulnerable? And what areas made the most sense? And uh, a lot of that was taken in and the planner drew up the basic vision of it, and then we worked through. All of that based on her experience, and then what we were seeing in the maps and what the developers were telling us. And uh, sleuthing. And uh, so that's how we came up, but there, there, there was a reason, and each one was like. Uh, Steve said, uh, parcel by parcel.
Okay. Well, we've have our uh hearings date set. And we'll begin the process then on the twenty-fourth next week uh for the workshop meeting. There'll be a focus on the PRCD with an emphasis on the procedures, because I, that's where we left it when, the last time that we met with Scott.
Yeah.
And he's bringing back um some ideas or a draft of the changes in the procedures. And I will let him know that there's now. Cease, CCRD. Uh, procedures that are going to be developed and. We're looking at combining the PRCD and the CCRD procedures into one document. As opposed to having them each be separate. Okay. I'll let him know that, so uh when he's coming to the meeting next week, he'll. Be aware of that. Anything further? All right, hearing, nothing, uh, how about a motion uh to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All right, by Thompson, seconded by Virginia, that we adjourn, all in favor, I.
I.
Close note, the meeting is adjourned at.
Nine twenty?
Nine twenty.
Pretty good.
Thank you all for coming. Good night.
Yes.
Yep.
Do you all tomorrow night? No?
Not me, swim lessons. Can't miss those.
No?
Excuse me, Judy.
I'm sorry.
I know, you're fine.
I finally got to stop was old enough to be in the swim lessons by yourself, but now I gotta be in the pool.